Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this regular meeting of council to order. First item on our agenda is the public input period. If there's anyone that wishes to address council this time, please come forward. You have a couple of minutes of our time. Give us your words of wisdom and thank you. Mr. Proctor, perhaps you want to come forward first, please? Because you may have an issue to leave.
This concerns my dog, Whitey, who was picked up by the school, I believe it was Thursday, at about nine o'clock. My daughter, Isabella, who's with me this evening because I couldn't get a babysitter, leaves for school on her own and gets herself ready and leaves. And Whitey slipped out at that time and followed her. I've been, Whitey and I have been going down to the school at the end of the day to pick up and walk home with Isabella. And the kids, as they come out, just mob him and hug him and pet him. And I think he went there hoping to get some more of this special treatment and was probably hanging around wondering where the kids were. Anyway, so he's been picked up and he's been charged as a dangerous dog, which is absolutely not true whatsoever. He's the single gentlest soul I have ever met in my life. And if anybody was in his presence for more than thirty seconds, you would know that you're in the presence of a very gentle being. And anyway, so it's twenty-five hundred dollars to get him back, which I don't have. I'm on a fixed income of my CPP, an old age security. I'm a retired MD and there's no benefits or pensions for MDs. So, it's also said that he's always getting picked up. Well, in fact, the last time he was picked up for being at large was February twenty-second, 2012, which is nineteen months ago, so a year and a half ago. Now, there was an incident in January when I had two dogs, Charlie, you'll remember Charlie, and he was a twenty-five hundred dollar fine as well, which I couldn't pay. And so we lost him. He got adopted by somebody else. Where Whitey and Charlie chased a cat that was on our property and they jumped out of the car and saw it and just took off. And I see there's a fine there for a thousand dollars. Now, I have a misunderstanding with Tracy. I understood that if I paid the vet bill on that, that that fine would be waived, which I did. But Tracy says that wasn't the deal and we don't have it in writing, so I may have misunderstood. There's another one here. February twenty-fifth, 2013, Whitey and Charlie attacked a cat. One thousand dollar city fine. This is a separate incident. On February twenty-fifth, my dogs were in my house on the morning that occurred. This does not concern my dogs. And I'm very alarmed to see this continually showing up. I have been to court over it and I may have to go again. It is not my dog. So, what we have a situation is a family dog. He was born in our house. He was extremely gentle, loved everybody who meets him, just loves him. And I am willing to pay what fines I can. He was at large when he's not supposed to be. Even though it was an accident, it doesn't count. But I want those fines not to be, because he's been declared a dangerous dog under the animal control bylaw, you can impose very, very severe sentences. Now, I'll just be very brief here. This animal control bylaw has recently been thrown out twice in British Columbia Court by B.C. provincial judges. And their ruling was that it put too much power in the authority of one person, that is, the municipal employee who's in charge of animal control, that that employee has no special training and that that employee takes evidence that's largely hearsay. In other words, somebody phones in a complaint but is not documented. And the other thing the judge found a fault was that there's no avenue for appeal officially. This is an appeal, but no actual appeal. And the consequence is once an animal's declared dangerous or dire, they can be destroyed and the fines are for many of us prohibitive, so you lose the animal. And what happens after that, I don't know. Whitey is not dangerous. He is not vicious. He's the epitome, absolute epitome of gentleness and love. And I will pay a fine for him being at large. I'll pay the best of my ability. And he was involved in the January eighth chasing of a cat, which was really strange because that cat ran to the house that we had just moved from, which they might have found confusing. But they were involved in that and I did pay the vet bill. But the second one has nothing to do with me. And the last time he was picked up was nineteen months ago. The other thing I'll just add quickly is that the dog catcher lives across the street from me and two doors over. Her dogs are out all the time. And my next door neighbor, Imphe's, their dog, Betsy, is out almost twenty-four hours a day. I have a sleep disorder, so I'm often up at three in the morning and Betsy's right there in my yard wandering around. And I've seen her at the school and I've seen her up on McLeod as well. I live on Plainer. And nobody is arresting or picking up her dog for being at large. And the dog is at large daily, nightly, every day of the week. So I feel that this is a bit discriminatory and I would like my dog back and I will pay, but I can't pay twenty-five hundred bucks and it's totally unfair and unjust in this case. If you have any questions, I'll answer them.
No, thank you. This is probably the input period, Mr. Proctor.
Okay.
As was the same here last time you were here.
Yes.
We discussed it in members' reports and I'm willing to do that again, to discuss it in members' reports, to see if there's any other remedy that council wishes. I will tell you now that the last time he came wishing the fees to be waived, council made a decision that we would give you a payment plan or whatever that we thought was more than fair, given the history here. I will bring it up again and see if council wishes to do anything different.
Mr. Granstrom, when your total income is twelve hundred dollars a month and your payment plan was a hundred dollars a month for two years, I said no, because I know that I do not have a hundred dollars left over at the end of each month, let alone for twenty-four months in a row. So it wasn't much of an offer because it didn't make any difference to me, sir. I don't have that money.
Okay, sir. I'm not going to debate it this time, but you did mention that you're willing to pay a fine at this time.
I am. I will do what I can, but I can't ever, at this point in my life, manage twenty-five hundred dollars.
Okay, sir.
Thank you.
We have the history here. Does all of council have the email?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
So I will bring it up, members' reports. I'm not sure if you and Isabella wish to get home. If you do...
No, we do.
Okay, then go ahead. And if you wished, give me a call around eleven o'clock or I'll give you a call in the morning.
Eleven o'clock in the morning?
This evening?
Oh, sir, I'd rather call tomorrow. Thank you very much.
I'll give you a call in the morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Public input period, please.
I'm Laura Paddett and I was just looking on tonight's package. And I'm hoping that when the exercise comes up, the social planning exercise, that I can get a better understanding of exactly what this is and where it's going. I understand that for the budget, you know, we need to know service level options, the social planning and the facilities. But I see dates of June and July and October and I'm not clear if we've already hired somebody to do this plan. I'm just confused on it and just reading it, I'm hoping that there can be citizen input from the get-go of the exercise. I see later on, turning into a feasibility study, or we have feasibility studies sitting on the shelf. So if we could just get a better understanding and hopefully involve citizens, because they're the ones that are volunteering and using facilities, paying for them. Thank you.
We'll try our best. Thank you very much. Is anyone else that wishes to address council, public input period? Yes, please. Tyler, yes.
I would just like to say that I was here last for the public input, not public input period, but the...
Public hearing.
The public hearing for the rezoning amendment down the Cook School lot. I went home with the intention to write a letter based on thoughts stemming from that evening. Life's pretty busy. I didn't get a chance to do that. So I'm here tonight to say that I think that that public hearing was a little bit too brief. I felt as though there should have been some sort of question and answer period. In fact, I believe there is supposed to be a question and answer type of scenario in that situation. But you said repeatedly, Mr. Granstrom, that it was not the question and answer period. Given the entire situation with the rezoning, the fact that the previous city planner is no longer around, who, you know, is, you know, the most educated person, I believe, you know, he could have been, you know, in a city planning position, the fact that he's no longer around, the fact that, you know, the public hearing was held out, you know, I don't believe proper announcement. There's a big sign, two signs in fact, down on the lot, saying, "Public hearing will be met at such and such date." But those dates were not filled out on those signs before that public hearing. I feel as though that before any decision gets made on this rezoning, that the public, in fact, deserves another public hearing where we are allowed to ask questions and we can get a clearer picture of exactly what stage this process is in. Because as it looks to me, it seems like there's a development prospect that fits the OCP, whatever, you know, credence that has, that just doesn't seem to make sense to the city planner, to the residents that don't understand why. In a place where there are fifty unsold houses that have yards and fits the style of Roslyn and people are coming here looking to buy, generally, I think, is to be in a, you know, place where they might have a garden and a bit of view of the mountains instead of a, you know, proposed apartment complex with super high density into an area that doesn't need it as far as anyone can tell, except for the developer who's trying to make, you know, some money out of it. And I think that you guys, the city council, just because there's pressure from a developer to develop a piece of property that he paid too much money for and he's got to put so many people in it to make good on it, that doesn't mean that it should happen and it doesn't mean that you should let it happen to a community that is based on a different look, a different feel, a different idea. And I have a real concern that the proposed developer with his history of unfinished buildings and the fact that it doesn't seem on the face of it to be a commercially viable project because who's going to want to live in a square box apartment building in, you know, in high density when they could just buy a house in Roslyn and have a yard and have, you know, a regular house instead of a high density house? Doesn't seem to fit. I know you got along, you know, a lot of stuff, so I'll leave it there. But, you know, please don't be the people that just let some, you know, some eyesore happen. I mean, it doesn't have to happen, so please, for the neighborhood's sake, don't let it...
Thank you. And I'd just like to say at this time that your insinuation that we don't have qualified staff here at the city of Roslyn, quite frankly, is unfounded. We, no, this is not, I'm sorry, this is not a debate. I'm telling you. We have made a decision on this, council, to save the citizens of Roslyn some money. That's what we did. And we wouldn't have done that if we didn't have qualified people. So I take a bit of offense with that. Second of all, to the fact of public hearings and you haven't had the Q and A that you wish, this process has been going on for over two years now.
I understand, huh?
And council has not jumped in at the whim of a developer. And as a matter of fact, we have resisted hugely to get this to a process that is fair for everybody. And we will continue to do that. And if you wish to stay, sir, for our discussion later tonight about this, you're more than welcome. Anyone else that wishes to address council? Yes, please.
Sir, one more. Sure, I'll get it. Again, I'm a concerned citizen that has a property directly across from this, right? So you're seeing the people, generally, almost fifty percent of the stakeholders around this said property are here today, probably in opposition, to be honest. And I just want the council to consider the density impact, the amount of people you're putting into a half block, right? And a reasonable accommodation towards the citizens. Fifty percent of the stakeholders are here and we're saying no, and the others say yes. Why not be slightly accommodating? You know, to have Cesari say, maybe we can put twelve units instead of twenty-eight or something that's more workable with the community, right? I'm just, I mean, my son wrote something too, but I just find that I don't want to waste the city council's time, but I live directly across the street from this property. And I just imagine how many building structures could be there and my kids are right there. And it's all, Thompson's already a scary, fast thoroughfare through Lower Roslyn. We all know that that's the second main drag. We all agree here that Thompson is, plus is right to the highway and they're gone, right? And they all start at the top of the street and they all come down. So I just want you guys to be reasonable and accommodating everybody's interest in this project. I mean, I just think that there's a workable plan between everybody here and I appreciate that council's been considering this for two years, you know? Yeah, that's all I got to say.
Thank you very much. And that's the goal of council, is to be fair.
Yeah.
That's what we're trying to do. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes. I'm sure if you put in twenty-four...
Troy, sorry.
Roy Bosnian.
Troy Bosnian, thank you.
I'm sure if you put in twenty-four units in there, property values will drop. If you put that one block of sardine-type building, property values all around will start dropping.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Bosnian. And just for the people that have spoken, this is coming up again on the agenda. And if there is changes to the bylaw or if there is a new bylaw, there will be another public hearing. Okay? Anyone else? Go ahead.
Actually, I didn't, I didn't realize that we got to speak today. I just got off a plane from Europe earlier this afternoon, so I didn't prepare anything. But you've had my letter from before and, I mean, every many concepts that I listed there, I still go with. I mean, certainly, the eyesore is a huge concern and we've driven past his, I'm so sorry, unfinished, not properly walled-in buildings that sit there being exposed to elements and stuff. And we worry about the timeframe that it's going to take to complete such a massive project when he has so much trouble completing one within any sort of reasonable timeframe where the weather's not going to affect it and make that building as bad as it might look, worth even less because the quality of the build isn't quite there either. So that's been a discussion in my period.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishes to address council, public input period? Moving right along. Motion to adopt the agenda, move by. Counselor Thatcher, second by spear in discussion on the agenda. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, motion's carried. Adoption of the minutes. Motion that the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting of September twenty-third, thirteen be adopted, move by.
To move.
Spear in, second by Moore, discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Motion that the minutes of the public hearing held on September twenty-third, thirteen be adopted, move by. Counselor Moore, second by Counselor Bloomey, discussion on those? All in favor? Opposed? Carried. The minutes of the regular meeting of council on the twenty-third be adopted, move by. Counselor Moore, second by Counselor Spear, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Motion that the minutes of the special meeting held on October seventh, twenty thirteen be adopted, move by. Bloomey, second by Spear, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Unfinished business, six A, request for a decision in zoning amendment regarding Cook Avenue School Site Planning Assistant. Recommendation from staff is that council direct staff to make changes to bylaw twenty-five forty-seven to address some or all of the neighborhood concerns, move by. Thatcher, second by. Bloomey, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
No. Hold on. No.
Spear right out.
Okay. He's sick. He's not... Quickly, we got like half a minute.
Okay, Counselor Bloomey, discussion?
Um, just nothing in particular, it's just that this makes sense to me that now we have new information, so we need to address it.
Thank you, Counselor Moore.
Okay, I have a bunch of things on this. I appreciate the staff report. I thought our assistant planner did a good job addressing the concerns that were brought forward in the last public hearing. I had a couple of questions. You know, so many of the concerns were density, safety, length of time of construction, showers, the look of the thing, divine issues, that kind of thing. I think those can all be addressed with further conversation with the proponent and hopefully we can get to a place where the credit to the community, to the neighborhood and to the developer, that would be the goal. I do have a question. Who is our approved officer now that Mr. Maturo's gone?
Your worship to the sideboard.
Okay, okay, that's good.
Sure, if you didn't hear that, it's Ms. Lightmore.
Yeah. Okay, so I am in favor of developing this property, but I want it to be done in a really good way. And I think to do that, we need to get some of these issues addressed from the start. Density is one that I realize is a big issue to the neighbors. It's not as big an issue to me because we've heard a lot of feedback that we need to diversify our housing stock. And I think that is important. On the other hand, we need to balance what we put in a neighborhood with, you know, balancing our need for diverse stock with the desires of the neighborhood, with making a proposal that works for, you know, for the proponent, that, you know, he's in it to make money. I don't have a problem with that. So I would suggest maybe we could reduce some of the density. We could put in a requirement that he add a truly affordable unit in there, is one of the suggestions that our assistant planner had made. And I'd like to see that be something that's discussed, that's discussed with the developer. As far as the height, I'm not sure I actually understand what the grade description means in regard to the site. There was talk of a lot grading plan. I'm wondering, do we have that for this site?
I think that...
So we don't? Okay.
That would be a zoning, I mean, a building permit size. Of what those definitions, what can I ask? Sorry. Sorry to do that.
That's okay.
The, when he comes in with a building permit, then that's when we ask for a lot grading.
Okay. Given that there's so much concern about this particular proposal, it's a big lot in our community. It is. And it's right in an established neighborhood. I'm wondering if there's maybe working, the proponent has expressed the desire to cooperate with the community. He wants to be part of the community. He is part of the community. He lives here, he works, he does that. So I'm hoping that maybe there could be some discussion with him. Maybe some of this could, we get a little more sense of certainty about things like the height. I mean, if you look at the height now, on one lot, one large parcel, the grade is the same as the surrounding houses. On the other, it's dropped way low. So if we were allowing twelve meters and he was allowed to raise it up to the level of the houses on Thompson, that would be a gigantion thing, right? If he's allowed to raise it to midpoint of that, that would also be real big. If he were allowed to raise it to the existing ten, okay, maybe that, you know, that would work. So I'd like to see, before we approve anything, to get some further understanding of that. I don't want to approve, I don't want to approve anything unless we know. Like, I was thinking perhaps we could have those, they call them story sticks, storyboards, there's not story sticks, the sticks that go up, that show you exactly how high. They put up the big sticks and they put the orange stuff on top so you could kind of get a, so the neighbors could get a sense of what this would look like, so council could get a sense of what this could look like. And so the neighbors, the neighbors would have a real idea of what they'd be, of what's being proposed. I think that would, I think that would be something that might be helpful. And I'd be willing to have staff work with the proponent and maybe see, maybe if he wants ten meters high and fill, that's one thing. If he wants twelve meters high, then he doesn't get to fill. You know, we can make those kinds of things. As far as the traffic goes, you know, there's probably a lot less traffic there than there used to be when there was a school there. But we hired an engineering firm who came in and said that that two-access design was the appropriate one for safety. And I think, and that also has more appeal in the neighborhood. And I think that's something that, you know, we need to, we need to consider, if there's a way to work with neighbors. The other thing, and this is a question through your staff, I don't know, was there any discussion with the proponent about us closing that alleyway that's in there and trading it out for additional space for snow storage, for instance, on the streets, which might enable us to keep the trees, one thing? Was that ever talked about?
Staff have had many, 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 many discussions with the proponent and many options. And I think many of the things that you've mentioned is exactly what we'll be doing with if we pass this motion. So I don't really want to speak right now to grade. Grade is from natural grade. So if it's twelve meters from the hole there at Thompson and Moniter, whatever, that's twelve meters. It isn't twelve meters from the top of Thompson.
Okay, it's twelve meters from as the lot is now, without fill.
From grade, yes.
Okay. It's natural.
But anyway, I don't, this is not really a debate for tonight. I think if this motion passes, what will happen is our concerns and the concerns of the residents will be brought back and we'll go at it again. And we're not going to stop till we get it right.
Okay, well, I would like to be able to express my concerns then too, as we're going, so, and then I'll, and then I'll be quiet and let somebody else do it. But, okay, so the idea of trading that interior alley has been discussed and rejected or not?
Your worship to the counselor has been discussion and he has been open.
It what?
He's been open.
There has been discussion and the developer has been open.
Open, okay, all right. Because that might be, I mean, I know the trees, keeping the character of the neighborhood, the trees are a big deal, right? And if we could get some of that wind back, maybe we could keep the trees. As for the design, I know people complain about sort of the boxy design, but we haven't seen any design, right? There's just been, they're like placeholders on the site. They're not designed at all. They may not be boxy at all. So I'm not as worried about that. But what I am concerned about is because there's a lot of concern about some of the existing projects the developer's had, that people are concerned of what will end up showing on the site. And so I was wondering if we might be able to create some sort of design guidelines specific to this zone, you know, not, I mean, I guess the conversation, so maybe there could be some real concrete ideas shown to the neighbors, shown to council of what this is going to be. Because the properties, properties over on Kootney that this developer's done are very, very different than the property that he built up in Iron Cove, for instance, right? So there's that. So I'd like to...
Counselor, Counselor, I'm sorry, Counselor. We, we're talking about zoning here. The form and character, whatever, that comes at development stage, correct?
I'm trying to be creative.
No, I know. And I think that's what we're trying to do too here. And that's why this recommendation is here right now.
That's good.
Otherwise, we could maybe forge ahead with something that doesn't fit, that doesn't work. And I think that's what we're, that's what we're trying to do. I mean, I know that we all have individual concerns and if we want to sit and list them all off right now, I think it's probably, no, no.
I think we should. Here's why.
Excuse me. Excuse me. We can do that. We have all the concerns of the residents and that will come back to council and then we can make decisions. And we can have discussions on something when we have something concrete. Right now, what we're discussing is a resolution to have staff come back with changes to the bylaw. Once we see the changes, then we can have another discussion and the residents can come and express their concerns again.
Yes. I'm trying to go and advance a little bit by expressing some of my concerns too. We've heard that citizens, we've gotten this from staff, and I just think some of the things that I'm suggesting might be helpful to staff when they go back to change their bylaw, right? To change the bylaw, as opposed to them doing it in the void without knowing some ideas from council. That's all. But I am almost done. If you'd just let me finish, I probably would have been done.
Counselor Moore.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so some of the residents' concerns were also things like the work hours, the length of time of construction. At one point, there was talk, and I'm sorry, it's gone this summer, maybe some of this has been talked about, but there was talk about restricting the work hours a little bit. Now, we know we have a short season for building, that's a problem, but we also know we're working in an established community. So I think there needs to be a little give and take there so we don't disrupt, this project doesn't disrupt the entire peace and calm of the neighborhood for a great deal of time. So I'd like to see that addressed, and that wasn't brought up in the staff report. You know, the affordability thing, I mean, the average house in Roslyn is three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. That's been kind of where we are the last few years. I don't know what these apartments will be, but I think we have to say, we're not looking at luxury accommodations like we might find at some of the other developments in town, but we're not looking at affordable housing that would be for people with limited means, right? If anything, this is going to be average. And I think we just need to be clear about, you know, what we're, what we're doing there. So, and, okay, so that's basically, I think I've said what I want to say. I want to send it to staff.
You finished?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor.
Okay, so, you know, as far as the request goes from staff, it does say that council directs staff to make changes to the bylaw. So I think it is our turn to say a few things. And I'll apologize, because I was traveling for the last five days, so I'm probably as exhausted as you are, and maybe not as clear-headed as I, as I would like to be. However, just kind of a couple of general comments about the development. And Counselor Moore has said a number of the things that I was, that I concur with. You know, we're trying in Roseland to diversify our housing stock. And whether or not you agree with what that's going to look like, or the density of it, or, you know, the whole project, we have to, we have to follow the guidelines of the OCP and what we're trying to do in our community, and that's to diversify housing stock. So that, this project addresses that. You know, I, and, and having said that, you know, I live in a very lovely, quiet neighborhood in the very edge of town where Redstone Development has been going on for a while now. And I listen to the construction every summer now, and I sit on my deck on an acre property with five acres or more around me, and I go, wow. And I was totally opposed to that protest down there. And now I've just had to go, you know what? This has changed. This is happening in my community, in my city, and, you know, you just, change happens, and we have to accept that change happens. As far as the density goes there, I'm hoping that we can have a conversation about the density. But developers develop at a certain density, on the most part, in order to make it feasible to do that. And if it's not feasible, then they're not going to do that. And you guys would probably be just as happy if they just left it fallow and it was just the field, but that's not in the best interest of all Roslanders. And because when there's housing stock that's being built, obviously, we gain revenue from taxes, and that goes into the coffers, and we use it for what we need to, and how we need to run our city with all its resources. So the details of this, I also feel that we need more details, because we can envision, you know, the worst scenario possible, but maybe that's not what's going to occur there. The density, you know, we understand it, we all understand it. But I think we need more information, and I'm, you know, and, and for council to say to staff, well, we want this, 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 and this, is really not reasonable until we've all had time for input, which includes the developer. So I'm looking forward to that next step, to be honest. You know, as far as traffic goes, I use Thompson Avenue two, three times a day. Like I say, I ride my bike in those days, but I drive because I work up here. And Thompson Avenue really, yes, some people drive fast on it, but it's not a congested thoroughfare. It is the second one in Roseland, the second major thoroughfare. But, you know, my kids went to Cook Avenue School, and there was never an issue with traffic around there then. And the reason the four-way stop was put in there was because of the school and to slow down and calm the traffic, which it does. I come to that four-way stop many times in a week, and if there's another car there, I'd be surprised, let alone four cars ever there. So I don't really agree with the traffic congestion that you're suggesting. I don't believe that that's actually a fact, that, you know, that, and even if there were 28 units there, you know, people are coming and going at different times during the day. And, and life in a city, be it a small city that we live in, that's the way life is. You have traffic coming and going. So that, that one to me isn't as, as much of a concern in the way that the design is, lends itself to making sense for that development. You know, I, I appreciate the concerns from the neighborhood, and we're not ignoring you, believe me. You've, you've spoken loudly and clearly, and as a council, we take into account what you're saying. But the fact of the matter is, the developer owns the land. You know, like I always say to myself, if I, you know, if I don't want someone living beside me, I need to buy the property. And that's a fact of life. He owns the land, he has the right through the OCP and all of the other rules that we have in Roseland to develop that land. How he develop it, develops it, rather, we can, you know, manage and barter back and forth with him, but the development, as I see it, should occur and probably will occur, and hopefully in a, in a fashion that is appropriate for neighbors, for him, and for Roseland as a whole. So that's all I'm going to say right now. But I really hope that, I guess I'm a little bit unclear, and to your worship, what will be the next stage after this, once we approve this? So it's going to go back to staff? Are we, as council, going to have a committee of the whole meeting? So we're having conversation with staff? Or what will it look like?
It will look like, as per the recommendation that's on the table right now, it will look like staff addresses the issues that we have documented, many, many, many. We'll address those and come back to council for council's thoughts.
So each one of those, though, has some recommendations to council tonight?
Yes.
So are we supposed to be, are we supposed to be making resolutions about each one of those? I, I thought that's what we were doing. We're going to look at it and say, have a conversation about each one of those. Maybe our planner could clarify that.
Well, I think that...
That is what I was looking for. I was looking for you to have discussion on each one.
On each one of those tonight?
And just direct, because otherwise, I come back with something on density, and there are lots of different options that you could do with density. I could reduce it, but then it might not, might decide to be able to develop, like I, like I said.
So would it be appropriate to have a committee of the whole mea, I mean, you know, two counselors aren't even here. So be it. I mean, we can carry on if that's the way we want to go. But I'm feeling that we need more of a, almost a working session with the developer, with council, and, you know, I, I know this, every, every time we do this, it holds it up, but I mean, obviously, it's not building this season, so I'll be looking to build next season, so we have to get it rolling. But maybe our planner could fill us in on this timeline and just, I understood that we were going to look at each one of these issues and have some conversation tonight. So when your worship, you said that to Counselor Moore, I was a little bit confused.
Well, then perhaps I was a little bit confused, because I just read the staff recommendation, and I read the report, and the recommendation is that staff proceed. So if we wish to have discussions on density, on all of these things this evening, then we can do that.
Your worship, you have a lot of...
I'm looking at the meeting.
Have you been invited to the hall?
Yeah.
Well, I, yeah, I don't mind a committee of the whole at all, it's just, it's time, I, I don't know, well, I'll leave to council if you wish to schedule a committee of the whole, or if you wish to discuss these. So what I'd like then, is if, well, we have a, we do have a motion on the table right now. So we can proceed with that motion, because that basically is saying that what we want to do is to revisit this and address it, right? So that motion would be fair, and then if somebody wishes to have, to put forward another motion that you wish to have a committee of the whole meeting? Well, let's just deal with the first one first.
Sure.
Okay?
Yeah.
All right, so on the first motion, I'm sorry, I'm going to go back, is, Ms. Butler.
Your worship, through the council, I'm just concerned that council aware, what this is saying in the first motion is that we go ahead and make changes, but we're not sure what those changes should be yet until after the committee of the whole.
All right, that's, okay, so let's get rid of the first motion. So on the first motion, all in favor? Opposed? Motion defeated? Another motion, Counselor Speer.
Well, I make a motion that council directs staff to, well, that we engage in a committee of the whole meeting with staff, appropriate staff, council, and the proponent of the development. Bringing forth the concerns of the neighborhood's citizens, and any other issues that we need to address. Sorry for being so weird. You're going to make that kind of setup.
Yeah, so basically, you're just saying we have a committee of the whole meeting to discuss, and at that meeting, we'll provide direction to staff. Counselor.
Recommendations to, yeah, we'll make recommendations back to council.
Second, first, second, Counselor Bloomey. Further discussion, all in favor? All of us, motion carried. Perhaps we can, well, we will inform the public when we're having a committee of the whole meetings, so they can be in attendance.
Your worship, we will.
Thank you. Okay, 7A, request for decision on bylaw 2558. Motion that council reset the public hearing date for bylaw 2558, zoning amendment, from October 15th to October 28th. Is there a move on that? And we've all read the staff report.
Yeah.
Moved by Counselor Speer, and seconded by, Counselor Thatcher, discussion, Counselor.
Okay, we've got it set up, we got it set.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed, carried. Development variance permit for Redstone drive sidewalks and the planning assistance motion to council, it's a little bit confusing, either the motion here says that the council approved the development variance permit, and in the staff report, it says that the, that we do not, or...
Says not, says not, council not approved.
Council approved the development variance permit. That is what's on the agenda.
Sorry, I was looking at the recommendation.
But I believe the correct staff report is that council not approved the development permit. Is that correct?
Yeah.
I'm confused, I need to move.
All right, so, there's a mover.
Sorry, could, could we have clar, uh, we want the permeable sidewalk?
Yes.
Not the, they don't want a sidewalk, we want a permeable sidewalk, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, move. And that, the recommendation that we not approve is made by Moore, seconded by, Bloomey, discussion.
Okay, I'm somewhat mystified by this whole circumstance, because historically, I think sidewalks were required down in Redstone, and the report says, well, they, you know, they weren't, they weren't put in. It was, they weren't put in not because they weren't required, they weren't put in because they weren't put in, right? Right? Through to staff, primary through to staff.
Yes.
Okay.
The subdivision's everything well, it says any sidewalks.
Right.
In their review letter, it said that they didn't need to put in sidewalks if they put in trails.
Right. And then the trails...
They didn't put in the trails.
Didn't put in the trails.
But he did.
Okay. And then there was, you know, I mean, I'm looking at this, it's like, and there was talk about, well, the, the bylaw wasn't properly enforced. But to me, it's like improperly enforcing, you know, not enforcing the bylaw doesn't mean that the bylaw doesn't exist. It does exist, and what it's, what, what we should be doing is enforcing it. Particularly when you look at that area where we're talking about down there, it's right on that. It's the main collector route for, for Redstone, which in the future could have 400 houses in there, right? And there should be, there should be a sidewalk there. There should actually be sidewalks through the whole thing, you know, as required in the original plan. And I like the permeable idea, not a whole bunch of concrete down there, but permeable sidewalks down there would be appropriate. If you think of our act of transportation plan, it suggests that we have sidewalks down in Lower Roseland, down along Davis and all of that, which would certainly make that walking experience a lot more pleasant, and I walk it a lot, and I would love sidewalks down there. But I, you know, I think it's important that, that we do that. Um, oh, and the other thing I don't understand is, is we should be applying, requesting a bond as well as requesting the sidewalks, because then if the sidewalks aren't put in, then we have the bond to put them in ourselves. So that's a question for you, through you to staff, is why wasn't the motion designed to ask for a bond as well as the sidewalks?
He could build the sidewalk. He could build the sidewalk, and he doesn't need to bond for it.
Okay, but if he, if he required a sidewalk...
Okay, I'm going to take the brief recess here.
Was it something I said? Everyone left a room?
I think I did. I heard the bathroom door shut.
I drove to Clonan's Lou. No easy way to get to Edmonton.
Okay, my apologies. Counselor Moore, you're running, a bond and a sidewalk.
Yeah, bond and sidewalk. Okay. Also, Caldera has sidewalks, and there's much less traffic problem out there, maybe that will be in the future, I don't know. But anyway, I think we need to be consistent, and I think the permeable sidewalk is a good solution. The other thing is, I've seen a number of complaint letters from residents in that area, in, in Redstone, and some of their complaints had to do with perhaps, you know, marketing things that were said and then, you know, didn't come true, or whatever. And that's not our business, but enforcing the things in our bylaw are. And we require sidewalks, so we should get sidewalks. We require, it's like, it's like we require the developer to put in lighting, for instance, right? They pay for that, we don't pay for that. And if we made a deal with them, that if they put in trails, they didn't put in sidewalks, and they don't put in trails, then they put in sidewalks. I mean, there's absolutely no reason why we shouldn't be enforcing the agreements that were made for this division, for this subdivision. Plus, it makes the place much nicer. They'll, they'll do better with their, you know, with their sales if it's a nice, attractive development. And having a, making it walkable and attractive is, is, it's a win-win, as far as I'm concerned. So yes, I think they should put in sidewalks.
Seconded it, sorry.
Bloomey didn't mean that. Um, follow that. It just, it just makes sense to me. It's, you know, it's just patterns with that, and that's a, not a, not a grant permit.
Okay, I think the word permeable is the word here that is the one. Has anyone been down there?
Yeah.
And looked at the compacted permeable boulevard? Anyone looked at?
Where it's slated to go, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, and there's pictures down, down outside.
Yeah, yeah, so, I don't know, what's the difference between a permeable sidewalk and a permeable boulevard?
Good question. Well...
Well, there's boulevards.
There's supposed to be, like, paper underneath from the whole, it's supposed to be constructed, right?
Okay, thank you. Well, we'll discuss.
Okay, well, that's a question. It was rhetorical.
It was rhetorical?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And a sidewalk from the wagon road to where you turn down into the golf, into the golf course is from where to where? I don't get it. Rhetorical. Anyway, the, the reason that we are able to make variances is for very practical reasons. And to me, it makes absolutely no sense to put in, certainly, concrete, and I know that recommendation is not to put in concrete, but, but anything that is permeable is there now, and it's compacted, and it's there. If we want to demarcate a part of the road, let's just put a white line in there, but I don't know why, I am not in favor of, I'm in favor of the variance, I'll just say that. And then we'll have a little bit more discussion. Counselor Thatcher.
Well, I think an easy solution is to more or less just grade that, that section with the sidewalk would be. It's already compacted, and, you know, it does connect the wagon road to the clubhouse and, like, from there to up to that Louis Joe drill. But to tear that all up and dig it all up, I don't see the scent, a lot of sense in that. I think if it, if it just be, you know, Bobcat scrape, you know, take all the weeds off and then, then put another layer of gravel, or pea gravel on or whatever, I think that's probably good enough. I don't know if you have to go through the whole idea of, you know, digging the whole thing up. You know, it's already compacted, it's already, as you're, as the mayor's saying, it's already there. I think a simple solution would just be graded, so.
Counselor Speer.
Okay, well, my question is, is that proposal for that sidewalk location with regards to the subdivision proposal, so people will cross over there and walk down there? I'm really not sure why that stretch of road was chosen. So that would be my question. Why is it that piece there? There's no sidewalk anywhere else in there.
Basically, because that's where the subdivision is, it's on, on the north side of the road.
Yeah.
You can't really ask for sidewalks in other places around the building related You can't really ask for sidewalks in other places around the building related to that subdivision. So, we, for that subdivision, we can choose either side of the road to put it on. Uh, if we put it on the same side of the road as, as the subdivision is occurring, it, there's a lot of infrastructure that gets in the way of the pigeons and, so.
So, it is, it is related to the subdivision? Okay, well, Frank.
But it also acts as a different pedestrian link between the wagon road and the clubhouse.
Pedestrian link from the wagon road, so you're, you're thinking someone walking down the wagon road, cross over, come back, go down the clubhouse. So, that's kind of a continuation of the trail.
Yeah, the Louis Joe kind of up there, it joins up, you go the wagon road, eventually you want lots of like.
Yeah, absolutely, and it makes sense. And I guess my biggest disappointment is that I would rather see them build a trail, because we have built that beautiful Louis Joe trail down to the golf course. And there's trail network down there, and when this whole subdivision started, there was the big, yeah, 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 we're gonna build trails and keep all that going. And frankly, they have not done that. So, we, do we want this piece of sidewalk, or do we want a trail? Well, my vote would be for trail, everyone knows that, um, because that is gravelly along there. But if we're not gonna get a trail, then we better get something, because as Counselor Moore said, you know, you, we're being inconsistent. You know, we got some subdivisions that have sidewalks and have put those in at great expense, and now we're saying, well, you don't have to put them in. And we know it's like a, I mean, the width of the road down there is enormous, like ridiculously enormous, but I know that's history. Um, so, yeah, I don't know the purpose of that. So, is that gonna, is that, so that's gonna meet the objectives of a sidewalk but in a permeable way? I mean, I'd perme, permeable is the way to go for sure. There's enough concrete down there for the next hundred years, so if we can avoid more concrete, I'm in favor of that. So, I would be in favor of having that, I guess, a delineated, yeah, pathway could even kind of work as a walking and biking trail at the same time, I suppose. Multi-use.
I, I think.
I'm in favor of the staff recommendation.
I have to reiterate that it's already there.
I know that.
And if we now all of a sudden designate that little, that stretch as a sidewalk, then we're maintaining it. Then we're walking a Bobcat from here all the way down to Redstone to plow that sidewalk from the wagon road to the entrance to Redstone. And I say, and I say it again, it's already there, we don't have to designate it, we might have to mow it, or maybe we have to drop a blade of grader down and say, here you go. But as soon as we make it a sidewalk, we have to maintain it. And we just went through our asset management thing, saying that instead of expanding, we should be shrinking so that we have less to maintain and less to upgrade in the future. Mr. Lightwood.
There are sidewalks in Everet Mountain right now that don't get plowed. We don't, I mean, we don't need to plow them right away.
We don't need to plow them right away, so why are they there?
Eventually, they'll be used a lot more, so.
In the winter.
And then we will plow.
In the winter, yeah, so when this gets used a lot more, then we will have to plow it as well.
Eventually, maybe.
So, it will be more to plow. Thank you. Counselor Blumey.
Um, so what kind of timelines are we dealing with? If, timeline being if we say, yep, so the sidewalk here, um, when does that have to be done for? And then, the other timeline, what was that?
Well, I think the, I think the bylaw says once the subdivision eight u, eight units are done, then you have to put that in. That's what we feel appropriate, correct?
And if we said, not at this time, it's, we don't feel it's an issue, but maybe felt at a later date it was, was something that could come back?
Well, no, because I think at a later date it'd be too late. I think you either approve it now or, or not approve it now. Counselor Moore.
Um, I think one of the things we're doing here is looking to the future, which is something that we should be doing. If we believe that Redstone will be successful, and there will be a number of houses, a number of people, um, you know, using this area, we should plan for it. And I think, you know, I mean, I have another motion that I was gonna bring about this, that we should go back and relook at all of the sidewalks in Redstone. And have, get a staff, get some staff input on that, right? Because, okay, yeah, we don't have to plow it right now, as development comes, we will. But if we don't put it in now, when development comes, we've got these bare bones highway, roads that people walk on. And it's not safe, for one thing, and it's not attractive, for another thing. And part of what we said in our original plan, the original concept for this, was we required certain things of the developer. And those things, we should get those things from the developer, right? I think it's important, so, yeah, I mean, you're saying, well, we have to plow, but to me, that's very short and spied it. Because if you look under there, we've got other lots on the south side of there that hopefully will be developed at some point. We've got the subdivision proposal this is attached to, will be developed. It's a, a stretch of road that has all of the traffic that, that comes on that way. I know there isn't a lot now, but think to the future, right? So, we don't get it now, we'll never get it, and we're not gonna get trails either. So, I think we should just go with what we, what the developer originally agreed to when we agreed to this thing. There's no re, I don't see any justification for reversing it.
First of all, I, well, and thank you, the, what we have is a city boulevard, we own the boulevard. What we're talking about is a permeable sidewalk. Permeal means water goes through it, right? So, we own it, so nothing's gonna happen to it. And permeable means that we have to make it so the water goes through it. But the water already goes through it, and you can already walk on it, and we own it.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
From you through to staff. Okay, in the definition, in a planner's definition of a permeable sidewalk, my understanding was that it wasn't just dirt on the side of the road, right? There's actually a process that happens, so, and I'm just wondering what that process is to actually make a permeable sidewalk, in planner terms, in planner language?
Yeah, in layman's.
Well, professional opinion.
In layman's language, grass is permeable. A nice lawn there to walk on would be beautiful without doing anything to it, and wouldn't have to maintain it other than mow. Anyway, did you want to give us a definition of permeable sidewalk?
Well, the intent is you would take off what is there right now, put landscape cloth to prevent the weeds, you lay down a compaction surface that, that really delineates the area where you walk, so it's an obvious pathway to walk.
Okay, that's what I.
Much like the trail I'm on right now.
Okay, that's what I figured, which would have been, which would be an attractive feature of the area. As you talk about now, compacted dirt path, nothing to prevent weeds from coming through.
I'm talking about a lawn, grass prevents weeds from coming through as well. Mr. Alvo.
The, the issue with the type of permeable surface that we're talking about is, yes, they will look good for two or three years, but then the weeds will start coming through. And as you see down there, it will not look much different, it really won't. Um, I understand, you know, the filter cloth underneath, but then there, there is soils between the cloth and the, and the top, and it will start to roll weeds. And it will be a maintenance nightmare, and we can't use pesticides in this town. So, I'm just, you know, just talking from a maintenance point of view. It would be costly to maintain something like that.
Counselor Spirit.
Okay, so I'm looking at the photograph from wagon road down, don't ask me on a page along, 'cause I'm on my computer. Thirty-seven, thirty-six, thirty-seven. And, you know, really, if that was a delineated permeable gravel surface, for better or for worse, I mean, I understand what you're saying with the weeds and the, um, and the problems with vegetation. But, you know, that might even invite people to go down to Redstone, right? Like, think of it, if you're on that page and you look at, that looks terrible. To me, that is not a pathway. That is a bunch of weeds, it is invasive plants, which we have a problem with in Roseland, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, I know there's new products out for landscaping, fabric kinds of things, 'cause I've talked to people about around my own place, and there are new materials. How long they last, I don't know that, but, um, you know, I think we need to, you, you know, if you look at it, it, that, that's not even a boulevard. That's like, that's the edge of the forest that has had nothing, it's undeveloped. So, you know, if we're happy with that, and that's the way Redstone Development's gonna look, then. But, you know, the rules were that they were to put sidewalks in, and really, if they're paying for this permeable sidewalk, I think they're getting a pretty great deal compared to if they had to lay concrete for a sidewalk, which was really the real rules, the real plan. So, yes, for maintenance, I can see that that might be, that is a concern for, for public works. Um, I don't know, I think we need, I mean, look at the photo, that's, that's not even gravel going down there, that's all weeds.
Well, I think.
You wouldn't even ride your bike down there.
The photo, it's not quite what's there, it's been mowed a few times, it doesn't look that bad.
Yeah, but we still have to mow it, if we're maintaining all of this, then why don't we get the most for our citizens, which is gravel pathway? And, I don't know, pull all those, the vegetation out and start again, I don't know.
If you wanted, if you wanted to demarcate a sidewalk, run a fog, or a, a white line like they do on the highway, a fog line, and with a couple signs on either end, sidewalk. And then you don't have to mow it, and when you plow it, you can just plow it without a, a separate piece of equipment, you're not worried about weeds, and there's a demarcated sidewalk, perfect.
Are you talking painting on the road? Is that what you mean, painting on the?
Talking of bike lane now through Redstone, that's a good idea.
There we go, there we go.
Well, put a line, there's a bike lane.
But no, but similar to that, and that just, that.
Well, I don't know anything about that.
People walk, and then, you know, I think it's a win-win for everybody. You still have a nice boulevard, and there it is, a walking path from A to B. Granted, the A and B aren't that far apart, but from A to B, and there it is, rather than ripping up boulevards and causing more headaches. Anyway, apparently you might know where I stand on it.
Apparently.
Okay, Counselor Blumey.
I've been talked out of it, I, uh, starting to sound like a make-work project, and we can't afford to add make-work projects to it. So, I would, however, like to bring up, I would be interested in bringing up maybe some of the other things that haven't been covered, that were supposed to be covered. And, um, those issues, I would be interested in taking a look at, um, and saving this one for the, you know, not so important compared to the rest pile.
Is there an action there, or are you just?
Well, I'm just gonna vote against what I seconded.
Well, it's happened before, Counselor Moore.
Um, I'm wondering your idea about painting lines on the road. I would like to hear staff's opinion of that solution, if we could.
No, I'll go to Mr. Alvo first, because he's the guy that has the deal with weeds.
Well, definitely from a maintenance point of view, that is a, a good idea, of course, because, you know, even in the wintertime, we've all curb to curb anyway. And that section of road for sure is, I think it's nine meters wide, you know, because it's the main, it's the main collector coming down there. So, in that section, I think that's not a, you know, a bad idea from, especially from maintenance. I don't know about, um, liability issues as far as not having, you know, a delineator between, except for a white line, or a yellow line.
Which, I mean, I'd say some kind of delineator. Kind of the movement, bike pass at least, 'cause that's generally what you see on a roadway. The movement now is to have more than a white line, to have some kind of, whether it be common barriers, or some kind of barrier separating the road, the roadway from pedestrians.
Well, even if you build a permeable sidewalk on the boulevard, what is, even if you build a permeable sidewalk on the boulevard, what is, what is the barrier between the roadway and the sidewalk?
Curve, curve, curve.
It's a rule over curve.
It's a rule over curve, so it doesn't really give you any.
It's a visual barrier, just like in the road, the cycle lanes that you see in the law of the cities now, doesn't need to be of the huge concrete barriers. Sometimes they just have little posts somewhere, it's a visual barrier, more than a white line.
Well, visual barrier is a white line as well, I think. Anyway, uh, I don't think Stacy answered the question.
Exactly.
So, your opinion on the white line issue, his?
I said the thing, that a white line isn't enough, that would, you could put some kind of post. I, I wouldn't know exactly what could be put there, there's lots of examples, but the newer bike lane, if the movement in bike lanes is to be a separated lane. As for maintenance, moving those, that could be a hassle, so.
Okay, Counselor Spirit.
Yeah, and I was just, and then I was gonna say, in the winter, when everything's covered in snow, you mean, you're not gonna see the white line. I mean, you know, I, I walked down there lots on that road, and, you know, it's a road, and, you know, you are kind of always looking over your shoulder because traffic flies through there, it's just the nature of the width of that road, and, so.
Okay, I think.
I want a trail. Tell them, ask them to build a trail.
I mean, this. I'm gonna call the question, I'm gonna call the question, and the, uh, the motion is that the development variance not be accepted. Okay, so the, the vote is to not, not go with the development variance, right? That's the motion. Do you wanna read it since you proposed?
Yeah, I'm unclear on the variance.
The Council does not approve the development variance permit application.
Okay, so in other words, you, in other words, you're saying sidewalks. If you vote for it, you're saying permeable sidewalk. Everybody got that? Okay, on that question, all in favor?
Uh, permeable sidewalks. Sorry, traveling.
Opposed, voices defeated.
Okay, I'd like to make another motion.
Yes, please.
Um, I would like to make a motion that, uh, we refer this back to staff for some alternatives, white line, some kind of delineation marker or something. That we refer this back to, well, not refer this, but, I mean, that we have staff, direct staff to investigate other possibilities of making a demarcated bike lane walkway in Redstone. And also that that would cover all of the sidewalk, where sidewalks were supposed to be installed in, in previous phases of Redstone, so that we look at this and say, maybe there's something we can do in Redstone that gets a walkway, sidewalk, bike lane, some kind of demarcation down in that area, on all the areas that they were required to do sidewalks before. That's too much, I'm sorry.
Well, yeah.
I don't have the excuse of traveling.
I think, there's a couple of issues here. I, I think, number one, referring that amount of requirement for information back to staff is.
You know what, I'll change it. I'll change it, I got a better idea. Let me try again.
Okay.
Okay, that the issue of sidewalk installation for the previous phases of Redstone be referred back to staff for other options. For discussion of other options. So, what I'm trying to get at, and I want.
Yeah, well, what are you trying to get at?
I'm trying to get at, I want staff to come back to us, okay, the sidewalks were defeated, but what else can we do down there to make it so that pedestrians have a dedicated walkway? Maybe it's the paint idea is the only idea, or maybe it's paint with little fuzzy balls or something, you know?
Well, I think, okay, I, I'm happy to, to hear that motion. I think we better remember that, uh, we're looking at staff right there.
And they look good.
And we, uh, that's the crew, so when we refer things back and ask for more information, we better make sure that we're doing it for something that we really believe should be done and take away, and so that we are now saying we're, they want, we want them to dedicate their time to this. That's what we would be saying.
Uh, we can put it out into the future if we're concerned about the time.
Well, then maybe we, maybe we can bring it up in the future.
I don't know, I, I think we should.
Well, then you said, you put a motion and you set the time.
Again, I'd rather have a, here's what I'd rather have, I'd rather have a motion out there, and because it isn't a critical issue, I'm willing to put a timeline to it, so I don't have to, but I don't want these things to just go out and drift away and never come back, because that happens to us a lot.
Okay, so what's your motion?
Okay, so Cynthia, did you get anything of what I just said?
Well, Counselor.
Well, she could read back what she has, 'cause I need it.
Refer back staff to bring forward issues of sidewalk installation from previous developments?
Um, let's see, well, the phases, the phases, there were other phases of Redstone that they were supposed to have sidewalks, and they didn't put them in.
Sidewalk installation for previous phases in which sidewalks were not installed?
All right, wait a minute, let's just say, options, yeah, you're right, I know, I'm sorry, options for, um, pedestrian and bicycle safety in Redstone. Maybe she just got that.
How about bicycle and pedestrian safety in Roseland?
We could do that, but right now, we're dealing with Redstone, because Redstone was required to put in sidewalks. And we already have the.
All right, so second it, okay.
Okay, I will second.
Okay, what do we second?
Some of the sidewalks in Redstone.
Yeah, I know.
It's gotta be in the plan.
Have we got a motion there?
Sector plan.
Staff?
That staffing forward a report outlining options for pedestrian and bicycle safety in Redstone.
Okay, is there second there?
I'll second it.
Well, you've spent a lot of time on this one. Thank you very much, Counselor.
Okay.
I don't know that you need to speak anymore.
I don't think I really need to.
Thank you very much.
But I was bobbled enough as it is.
So, my, what I would, so what I would really like is an update on the sidewalk requirement for Redstone.
Okay, good, add that.
Right? Because, yes, yeah, I'd like to have an update from staff. Can we add that on? Or do you wanna change it, or just vote on this?
I think we better vote on this, because we're gonna be going around this, I know.
Yeah, and then, and I, I mean, I was gonna.
I understand the intent, I understand the intent, but I also understand.
And I could make a motion, another motion about trails.
Well, you can make another motion if you want, put on this motion.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, please.
Okay, staff has more or less already done this, they've already, uh, said, they already canceled the concrete sidewalks if, if Redstone has a trail plan. So, why don't we get Redstone to submit a trail's plan for their subdivision? It's already there.
It wasn't approved. That.
But if we got, just got Redstone to, to, to submit a trail proposal plan, I think that would be a, then they know that we are looking at it and.
And we're looking at what we were supposed to do. And we're looking at what we're supposed to do.
That's on page thirty-four.
Okay? Well, what I don't like is, is this motion on the, even if it's seconded and passed, I don't like it there because it's, uh, it quite frankly is just another job for staff at, uh.
Well, let's vote.
I know, we're going to vote. And I'll speak when, if I can. Appreciate that, thank you. We're gonna have, uh, requests for staff, we better be careful that, uh, we're directing staff. So, this directs staff to do something and I want you all to be aware of that, that takes time. On the motion.
Can I make an amendment to the motion?
No, no, thank you, no.
To put a timeline on it, into the future.
The motion now is, the motion now is on the floor. The motion has been seconded, it's the motion now of council. Okay? All right, so on the motion, all in favor? Opposed. Motion's defeated.
That was unfair.
It was not unfair.
Well, if you're concerned about staff time, and I was about to amend it.
Counselor, I have never, I have never.
I was about to amend it to allow timeline, right? I don't care about your dead phony there. I was about to.
You're out of order. You're out of order, Counselor. You're out of order.
Well, so are you.
No, Counselor, I'm the chair, I'm on the meeting.
I know, but, but the.
You're out of order, period. Thank you.
You're being a bully.
Your worship to the council, before we leave this topic, um, we will need a motion if council is going to approve the development variance. We have one not to approve it, but we would need one to approve.
Yes, I got it, and we do not approve, now we need a motion to approve. Sorry, I was worried about trails and things. All right, we need a motion to approve the development variance. Move by.
I'd like to make another motion.
We do this one right now and if we throw it out, then we're, we're gonna be making motions on this all night. Okay, is there no one to move this? Move by Bloom, you seconded by? No one wants to second it?
Well. So, this is so they don't have to put in sidewalks? I will second it, as long as I'm clear on that. So, variance, so they don't have to put in any sidewalks?
This one, this little one that goes, yes.
So, they don't have to put it in?
Your worship, just a moment, we just wanna clarify with, um, Stacy here. So, we had a motion not to approve the sidewalk?
Yes.
And now we need a motion so that they don't have to put in.
Yes, exactly, that's what the approval of the variance.
That's to approve the development variance. And that's what I'm trying to explain, and we have a motion by Bloom, does anyone not want to second it? Then it does. Seconded by Counselor Thatcher. I'm not gonna discuss it any further, call the question. All in favor? Opposed. Motion's carried. Now, you wanted to make a motion, oh, sorry, no, wait, Mrs. Moore, Ms. Moore wanted to make a, a motion, please go ahead.
I wanted to make, no, I don't, because my motion was defeated. I just wanted, what I wanted to say, because that was your concern about the workload on staff, what I wanted to say was, because it's a low priority item, we could put it off into the future, which would have been a reasonable compromise, because the issue of safety of pedestrians and bicyclists in Redstone and the, the fact that they were supposed to be putting in sidewalks and now we're letting them out of that, we don't let Caldera out of it.
We, we're not letting anyone out of anything.
So, I don't have a motion because my motion was defeated.
Thank you. If you wanted to make another motion, that's what I was going to say. I've never been against anyone making a motion, if it makes.
But I can't make a motion, because we just defeated it, so I can't bring that same motion back.
No, we can't, because your motion was defeated. And I just asked you if you wanted to make another one. And apparently you don't, and I think that's being more than fair. Counselor Thatcher.
I'd like to make a motion that, uh, council requests Redstone Resort to, uh, submit a trail plan, uh, for all, for all of Redstone. And if it's not, if it's unacceptable to the city, the city may require permeable sidewalks.
Second it.
Okay, you might wanna just, I don't know if you wanna put, if they don't, if they don't, you're gonna do that.
Well, no, the city has, it has, the trail plan has to be acceptable to the, to the city.
An acceptable trail plan to the city.
That's correct.
Okay, you got that? Okay, seconded is good? All right, I'll call the question, all in favor? Opposed, carried. I, uh, this is C, request for decision, Swimming Pool Society. I motion that council authorize staff to proceed with the dissolution of the rules of Swimming Pool Society. You've already read the report, it's pretty clear. Mover to that. Move by Thatcher, seconded by.
Prove, oh, second it.
Spirit, Counselor Bloom, you spirit, discussion? All in favor?
I have some discussion, I thought the movers and secuers were gonna say something.
No, I think it's, um, it's tomorrow.
Counselor.
So, my concern with that is, um, there were some, there was a special resolution put forward to the registrar about putting the city folks on and taking citizens off. And in there, that's supposed to be down at the bottom, there says no special resolution has to start until accepted by the registrar. So, was it accepted by the registrar? And where's the proof of that? We have a letter from them saying?
Uh, we have, yeah, we have the letter saying that amendments were made.
Okay, amendments were made, okay. And so, we have the amendments here. Would have been nice to have had the constitution there, so we know, like, it deleted, I happen to have the constitution, so I figured that out, but I don't know if anybody else does. But, one of the things, in the two thousand and one amendments to the society said, that if the society is dissolved, then the assets go to charitable organizations. So, I'm, I'm, I would like us to not pass this tonight and have staff look into this to make sure that we're not doing the wrong thing and that we're being in a situation where we're supposed to put the assets of the society up to charitable organizations instead of to the city.
This is.
Your worship to the council, the only asset is pool itself, which is owned by City of Roseland, there's no other.
Uh, the society has title to, they have titled us then, right?
We are the owner.
Okay, okay, that's interesting. Um, and I have another question, and that is, was there a two thousand and thirteen water report from Interior Health? There's a twenty twelve, one in the twenty eleven, but there was no twenty thirteen.
Your worship, we have not received that yet. Interior Health had many staff changes this year. Although they did come in due exception.
Okay, any further, uh, I don't, you have to go ahead.
There's gonna be all more discussion coming up about the pool and, and, you know, facility, assets and liabilities and whatnot coming up in discussions, so.
Okay, any further on the motion?
I just, you know, you're just getting, uh, nobody's wants, wants to run the society, you know, there's very few people there, and to run that pool, I think, is a big job just for, you know, a few people. I think it's time, that pool's eighty years old, I think it's time that we took it over officially. And, what else can we do? It's, uh, it's our, it's our asset, so we may as well run it.
Okay, thank you, and I think, as, uh, Mr. Elbow said, there'll be a lot more discussions coming. This is only to, this, all of the Swimming Pool Society. All right, on the motion, all in favor? Opposed, motion's carried. Okay, request for decision of joint venture, Chris, I wanted to say Christian, Christina Gateway Community Development Association. I, uh, we have a staff recommendation here, but I, I think that, given our, the time of year and, uh, the amount of things we have, we wanna take on another, it may be the greatest idea in the world, but if we're gonna take on another idea like this, we better be careful what, uh, what we're doing. So, I'm, I'm, we have the, uh, staff recommendation here, so I'll, if someone wishes to move that, that's fine. I think what we could do is just, uh, what we might wanna do that is prudent is just to, uh, maybe send a letter to Christina Lake and thank them very much, and we're interested, but not at this time. That's my opinion, but I'll take a motion from the floor, if anyone wishes to, Counselor.
Well, I wasn't gonna make a motion, but I was going to suggest, and through my weariness, my note-taking on this, I just thought that we shouldn't be agreeing in principle to anything until, like, it's kind of a cart before the horse, that we need them to come and talk to us and present to us and convince us of why we should partner with them. And so, I'm not prepared to, um, to vote positively on that motion, so I would vote against it for that reason.
Right, so, well, we need a motion to discuss, okay, so, yes, Counselor Bloom.
Well, I'll make a motion.
I'll move to, if council agrees to, or authorize the staff to invite members of Christina Gateway Community Development Association to provide more information on what this partnership will entail, as well as to assist the council in identifying just how the joint venture works. Just to take up the principal part.
That's a motion to get Christina Lake people to come here and discuss with us. Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Could I, could I add a little amendment? Or, just an understanding, I think that Tourism Roseland and Chamber Commerce should be invited to that presentation and any other service, service holders, so that they all hear the same message. It's just, we don't want all these different little fragments of economic development and those people who are working for the city. So, I would like to make sure that those two groups certainly are here amongst others, I suppose, but I, I don't know.
I don't think that has to be part of the motion.
No, fine, it's, it's an understanding.
We would just have that in our, out there in our liaisons, maybe. I don't think that needs to be part of the motion, so is that okay? This is.
Your worship, I'm assuming this would be, uh, committee of the whole meeting?
Sure, yeah. Yeah. And that's, that's set it for December twenty-third.
How funny you are.
The last day I've got open. Anyway, that's the motion, okay? Have a committee of the whole meeting, that's fine. Okay, second. Okay, on that motion, all in favor? Opposed. Which is carried.
I think the E D T F should be there too, right?
Well, I think we can let anybody do. Counselor. Staff direction of the fourteen eighteen financial plan, uh, again, we have a staff recommendation here. I think, though, rather than having, uh, the mayor appoint council members, I believe that each one of these should be done at a committee of the whole meeting. I think, uh, we've had discussion with staff and I think that we can handle that, rather than breaking it down into members, individual members going here and there and then bringing it to us, I think it might be more prudent if we do it all at a committee of the whole, so I would suggest that, uh, unless somebody wants, wishes to move staff recommendation, I would suggest that we, uh, move that all three of these be discussed at a committee of the whole ASAP.
I'd like to make a comment, and I appreciate the comments from the gallery. I think that the idea of having these committees and getting some citizen input, we're always trying to get citizen engagement in budget, and I'd like to set up some sort of a way that citizens could participate as well. I don't mind it as a committee of whole, provided we could, we could have some citizen representatives, um, give us their input as well. Not just in a public input or that kind of thing, but actually as part. That's why I like the committee idea.
Well, I don't know, I, I don't mind, uh, your suggestion, but I don't know how it's any different than any other thing that we do. Uh, we have a committee of whole meeting and people come and they listen and they, I mean, I don't, I don't wanna have a, a council meeting, uh, uh.
Debate.
A, a big debate about, you know, you know, uh, we would come up with, uh, at a committee meeting, we would call the recommendations to go to council and the public is more than willing to put their two bits in anytime they want.
I mean, it's totally different, though, when you have, you know, like, we had, we've had committees for certain things, like the Museum Gateway, like, you know, Visions to Action, I mean, there's all kinds of things where we've had participants in the community and they've made valuable contributions.
I understand.
And I, and we would really like to get the community more involved in budget. So, I think, I mean, when, when I saw the staff recommendation about committees, I thought, oh, that's great, we can expand the committees of each of these things and get some citizens involved, and then the recommendations come to council. I like your idea, I think it's better to streamline it, to make it not an individual committee, including, you know, all of council, but then we lose that citizen involvement, and I think that's a shame, and I think we should address that in a more organized fashion than just a committee of the whole, where people can say something and we're not.
Okay, I'm pretty sure, thank you, I'm pretty sure we'll get to a motion in a minute, that's, Ms. Bloom.
Your worship to the council, at any time, um, councils can have public conversation on anything they want on financial plans, and this could be part of that. It doesn't have, doesn't have to be one time, it can be ten times.
But I mean, that is, that, once we get to, right, but once we get to a point where we, we have some direction, and then we would, like, the public, like, we have for however many years, you've been here and I've been here and combined, we've been here, and the same five people come and see us, and I think it's great. Counselor Bloom.
So, I, I guess much like was just said, is that we've been talking about doing public input for this, the whole time we've been talking about it, and meeting as a committee of the whole, or meeting, it doesn't mean that we can't meet as council. I mean, it's still a council decision that we're making in a council process, and then we will be deciding as a council how to include the public in that, but that'll be part of the process that ultimately starts with council. So, I think we still need a C O W.
I think you need to start with a committee and then.
And then, yeah, so, I just wanna say, I just, I don't wanna, I wanna say, yes, let's just do the C O W, but I'm not saying that because I don't want public input, I want the public input, I just don't understand why it's an either or, it's, there's definitely gonna be a public input.
No, I don't think it is an either or.
As far as what we're all saying, so, yeah, anyway, let's just have, finally, finally make the first step and get together and talk about this.
So, I think what I'm suggesting, and what I think I'm hearing, is that we have these three functions in a committee of the whole, right? We move from there and then once, and we move out and a committee of the whole decides how we wanna go through the public, but we have to start with this. It's my opinion. Does anyone have a motion?
I will move what you just said.
Yeah, but I forgot.
And council start the five-year financial planning process by setting up.
By having a committee of the whole.
Committee by setting a series of committee of the whole meetings.
That deal with service level options, community development, social planning, recreation.
Yes, and I'm not, I'm not sure.
I would think one each, yeah.
Is there, and I guess my question.
Well, depends.
Priority, community development, social planning.
Okay, then we'll decide if we have, we have, we have, then we get some direction and then we say, okay, public, here we go, and we can all sit in some building and listen to everybody.
I wanna make one comment, um.
Do we have a motion, do we have a motion in a second, right?
My comment would be.
No, Counselor, sorry, this is, Counselor Bloom made the motion.
I reiterated it.
He just really, really wanna make a motion today.
I liked it, I liked this idea. I wanted to make one comment on something that you'd said, when you talked about public engagement and that how the same five people always show up and da-da-da-da. That's exactly why we need to do it differently, right? And I appreciate the fact, we start with a committee of the whole, but we need to do it differently. And when you just have public input, the public is not engaged because they don't feel they have any input, they don't feel they have any real, um, impact, right? So, that's why I like the idea of getting people who actually come and they sit on the committee, they actually have a role to give their, to give their ideas, those turn into recommendations to council. But they're with council, they're with staff, they're not, we're not gonna be overrun by the, you know, hordes of Roselanders who are gonna be involved in this.
You're correct, you're correct.
But at least we've given people who are interested in, perhaps we can even recruit some people who we think would have good input to give us on this and get them involved. When we just put up a public notice and say, come hear us blather on about this, nobody shows, for goodness.
That might be the, that's, might, might be what comes out of the committee of the whole. Is that, is that what we do?
That's my point, that's our point.
No, no, I'm, yeah, no, 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 I'm agreeing with you.
Well, then that's
You're starting the meeting already. Yeah, I'm starting the meeting already.
Okay, so on that motion, if you've got a good one there, staying away from
So the council starts by your financial planning process by setting a committee of the whole meeting to discuss the following service level option, community development, social planning, recreation and
Meeting. Series of meetings, I said, that was my beautiful wording.
Now he's taking it from me.
Okay.
Okay, I think we're pretty clear there, on the motion, all favor. Close, motion is carried. Okay, so that takes care of all of that one correctly. Information items, motion to receive the information items and act on the recommendations that are within, move by. Counselor Moore, second to by, Counselor Blumey, any items that we wish to discuss, that we wish to discuss for a reason?
E and H, really quick.
Yeah, E, E and H.
I mean, I don't know what letters they are, the heritage and the youth action grant.
And the what?
The youth action, F A, application, yep, okay.
All right, any other ones? Okay, go ahead, counselor.
So, E E, the specific grant approval letter, and I'm just wondering if it would be appropriate for us just to send a thank you letter to them for approving our grant, show a little appreciation for fifty thousand dollars.
Counselor, sorry, Ms. Butler, I think we already have done that.
Per, and a thank you letter that goes, returns with it.
Hey, is that it for the sending thank you letters to the city? Okay, H?
Tell me.
No.
It was both of us. You could start.
Which one was the heritage, was that before that?
E.
E, E comes for H.
Well, I just didn't
No, E was city.
Yeah, F is heritage. So go ahead with that.
Worship? Since he has just informed me that you did, there's already been a thank you letter sent.
I know, we already did.
Sorry, didn't see it, was that just this week?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
So the heritage side, I just wanted to recognize Chick Gressley Jones and his contribution to the city and his passing. And maybe send some kind of a card to his family or to Jean and just say thank you for his services and that we're thinking of them all now, is that possible?
We've done that.
We've done that, thank you.
And just for information, Counselor Thatcher and myself were at the little get together.
The more.
At her check.
Thank you. Awesome.
I'd like to comment that too, that the Heritage Commission, they wanted to try to get hold on the city's old benches, for a memorial bench?
Yeah.
Does that have to go through council, or does that just go right to, to City Works?
Um, it's a works issue. Well, there, there might be other issues as to where we put it or whatever, outside of the, of the policy, but that'll come back if there's any issues. And the city owns the benches. Anything, uh, anything else on that? H, who had H, Counselor Moore?
H was the youth, the youth thing. I just want to thank Mike Kent, I thought he jumped on this really quickly and got this application and I hope we're very successful and I love the letters from the Seven Summits kids. I thought they were great. So anyway, good job for him, he's brand new and he just jumped right in.
Yeah, not just that, I was pretty impressed by that whole report and the way he's engaged the youth in the community and got that whole process going and, um, I smiled at some of the things that came out of it, but could anyone tell me what that parkour or P A R?
Yes, I can.
What is that, parkour, I don't know what that word means.
I have to look it up. It is using, use, just leaping over things, like if somebody was doing parkour and they came in this, they would run through the room, they would jump on the desk, they would bounce off the wall and they would run out again. They wouldn't do it in here, but they do it all through
Is it sport?
It's a, well, it's kind of a rebel sport, I think, but it's like, you know, they go through, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, you should look it up and see, was started by some French guy.
Guys, in French, that means by body, right?
Parkour.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm no French.
Well, of course.
Anyway, okay.
All right, that's H.
Yep, that's it.
I don't want to talk about cool. All right, bylaws, request for decisions. Oh, is that old, old thing? All in favor? All the motions carried, thank you. Request for decision and revenue anticipation by law, motion that council give first, second and third reading to by law twenty-five fifty-nine, move or move with spirit, second to by Blumey, discussion. All in favor? Close, motion is carried. Temporary loan by law, motion that council give first, second and third reading to by law twenty-five sixty, move by. Blumey, second to by. Thatcher, discussion?
I have one question. One question is on, should the term of the loan be restated that we're
Worship, I can check on that, but I don't think it's a requirement of the temporary loan by law, because it is a temporary by law.
Okay.
The loan by law is a temporary by law.
Okay, on that, all favor. Close, motion is carried. Caressive tax exemption, there we are, by law. The council give first, second and third reading to by law twenty-five I believe you are correct. Let's, can we make sure before we leave here? You sure? Okay. Motion to adopt by law twenty-five sixty-one, move by. Blumey, second to by. Spirit, discussion.
I have a question.
Yeah.
They separated out the Seven Summits Learning Center, is that correct? It got separated out the
Worship, yes.
Yeah.
Just so that council is aware, the O one that was on the previous assessment referred to what was the daycare, which is now what is the Seven Summit School. So we're actually going to be flipping, the O one will become what was the hall, which will now be the residence and that will not be exempt, but the portion that has the school will be the part of this event and the assessment authority is aware of this and they will be able to open that as well. Why don't they proceed our by law?
Thank you.
Okay, on the by law, adoption, all in favor? Close, motion is carried. Counselor Wallace wished to discuss economic development, regional, community boundary, regional district, she's not here this evening.
There was one more thing on the Fortis B C grant application, I had a question on that.
Where?
On, no, number eleven. That's the Fortis Community Investment Application, that's the bottom, page one twenty-two.
I don't have, it's not on the agenda.
But it's in our package here. I just had a, I just had a quick question.
Oh, we're not, very, very
What?
Maybe it's just the members' report, I'll just, yeah.
Yeah, that's why it was there, is because it was for members.
Members' report, okay, all right, good, thank you, sorry.
Okay, Councilor Wallace wanted to discuss economic development, I think that, I don't want to paraphrase her, but I think the discussion is about funding of the, or giving dollars to the regional district to fund the L C C D T, which funds the L C I. I think we in the past, and I'm not going to miss our discussions, this is not here, I think we in the past said that it's had a run and we may not wish to put money in that anymore and that'll be part of our discussions, right? Very shortly. Okay, so anyway. Eleven, oh, Counselor Blumey.
Okay, so, um, on the current incarnation of the broadband task force is a gentleman named Graham Robinson, I think?
Yeah, Robinson, yeah.
Graham Robinson. And, um, anyway, he suggested that we apply for this and so I have filled it out except for, I left open the, um, what kind of request are you making? And, um, so I guess first of all, I have to put forward a motion that, you know, that, well, actually, maybe I'll, I'll just keep it all in one. Okay, so my motion will have something to do with, can I please, or can we please submit this? But then also, should we submit it and ask for what, and that's we have the choo, choice between cash and in kind and cash wouldn't be very much money, this isn't like a big grant, it's just like, you know, few to several thousand dollars kind of thing. Um, the in kind, however, uh, the idea there is, hey, how about maybe perhaps they'd be interested in giving us a break or a certain amount of time of, I don't know, subsidizing our poll rentals or who knows, something like that in kind, that might be something that they'd be willing to do. And, um, yeah, does anybody here have any preference to what it is that we should ask for? Or should we just go in with the in kind and ask for poll rental subsidy or gifting or what?
First of all, I think we already have a resolution by council that we proceed with grant application on broadband, so I think this gets
I thought it was, is it, was it a generalized one?
I believe it was.
I think it was
Okay, well, all right.
We had went to diversification and buyback, so we're all
That motion is simple to make, we can make it. So I, did you not word it so it's either or?
Well, let's say that I, well, I might as well just put a motion out there and then we can talk to it. I move that we send in this grant application and that we request in kind, um, I don't know, in kind grant or should I say it's supposed to be poll rental? An in kind grant in the form of poll rental subsidy or
How about annual forgiveness of the poll rentals?
I like that, yes, aim high and receive low.
Because, you know, it's not a cash contribution, it's a, it's an in kind for poll rental.
Yeah.
If they did an annual
Okay.
Get your motion and then we'll have it.
So the motion is that we apply for this, we send it in and request in kind, um, what does it say?
Payment.
Waive the rental
There you go, in kind services in the form of annual poll rentals.
There we go.
Okay, that's, all right, second.
Worship, I'd like to clarify, is that the broadband task force be authorized to submit a grant?
Well, it's in the name of this city and Graham Robinson himself being a Fortis B C employee and the way that this is set up is it's designed that it's, it's good if an employee hands it in, so he will physically hand it in, but City of Ros, uh, the City of Roslin will be, you know, reviewing it to make sure that it speaks for the City of Roslin.
Okay, the City of Roslin then. Did we get a second? Counselor Spirit. Okay, you've already spoke.
I was just going to say, it should, do, so is that, I'm just wondering if somehow it should be worded so that or, right? If they don't want to give us the in kind or, you know, we'd accept some cash contribution or something along those lines, but that's kind of
You know, it says check one and it says cash and in kind, so we, we got to decide and hopefully bill off of the other if they're not willing to do one.
Thank you.
Further discussion?
I have a question, remind me how much we're paying for the poll rentals annually?
It is a matter of thousands of dollars, but not many thousands of dollars.
Eleven, that was twelve hundred.
Big fish or something like that.
Was it there?
Yeah.
Annually?
Well, I don't know, I can't remember.
No, it wasn't that
Wasn't it like two hundred or four hundred a month or something like that?
Well, it was a hundred and thirty-five a month, I thought.
Well, you know, I was looking at that recommendation just earlier today.
Anyway.
My, my point being, um, if we ask for the in kind, the waiver of the, of the poll rental, Fortis may look at this and say, ooh, we're setting a precedent here because we're waiving it for this municipality and when they probably have a number of other municipalities who are also going to do that, they do it for us and they may feel, obviously do it for others, they may turn us down. On the other hand, if we just say we want cash and we go to whatever the limitation of this fund is, which we don't really know, right? Did Graham have any idea, can we ask for five thousand dollars?
They don't really, yeah, they didn't specify.
So maybe we should just ask for cash contribution of, I mean, it'd be nice to know what the, you know, the boundaries of the fund are, you know, can we ask for fifty thousand dollars or can we only ask for twelve hundred dollars? And ask for cash and then not put them in the spot of setting a precedent when other municipalities are going to come and ask for the same thing. They could just give us cash and we could use it for broadband and we say we're using it for broadband installation.
So is setting, is giving cash not setting a precedent?
Well, it might be, but it's not quite the same. I mean, it's, it's, it's not, it's not quite the same because they could say, well, we gave cash to Roslin, but, you know, we're, you know, we don't have to, I mean, I don't know, maybe it's the same, but I'm just thinking if we say it's for the poll, wa, waiving the poll fee, they might say, ooh, that's really specific and that's going to impact us with other municipalities.
Well, I think they're asking for a specific, specific
Yeah, we just say broadband implementation.
I think they're more likely to, we, to help, help with polls, as Graham has probably already told you, than they are with cash and I think this
Okay, then I'm good with that, just reading that point.
Yeah, I did consider that very thing also and, um, I, um, this was a couple of weeks ago already, so I can't remember what, what my path was thought was and who I talked to about it, but, um, the end conclusion was that, that we should
In kind, then.
Okay, so this would be more likely, so I can't, sorry, I can't remember the details of why that was more likely.
That's okay.
Okay, anything further on this? Do you have a call question, all in favor? All the motions carried. Members' reports, again, anyone else, Counselor Spirit?
Enjoying it all, that's it.
Well, I went to the museum presentation today, so I dragged myself from work to there and that was awesome. I was very excited to hear the report from the consultants and they were great, it was a good turnout, that was at the, I went about cord four and was there till six or something, it was quite long, cord six, but, and then there was the second city. But anyway, it was very interesting to hear the consultant recommendations, to see the visual aspects of it, always helped me, um, on their kind of proposals for revitalization of the museum and some of the concepts and programming ideas and you could feel a real, there was a real positive energy around, um, around the presentation and, and the folks that were chatting around the displays, so, um, that was great to see that and I look forward to the next steps on that. And other than that, I don't have anything to report.
Counselor.
Well, I was just going to bring up that meeting, those meetings today too, I thought were excellent, see, there was probably thirty, forty at the first, uh, presentation, media was there, Councilmore and the Spirit were there. There was a lot of good questions asked by, uh, people in attendance, uh, very, very well presented and hopefully something can happen in the future with that. And the only other thing was, I, I remember asking back in July or something, what those electrical charge stations, if he ever had any usage on those? I'm just curious.
I got a good one on that too.
And if, if we're charging, you know, how are we getting paid for that? I know you're plugging your car, but where's that money go, does it come to, right to general funds or where does it go? Just curious.
Yeah, if you have an answer to that.
Worship, I don't have an answer for that, as far as I know, they have nothing to do with it.
Just while we're on that subject.
Okay, you do that, you might have the same thing as me.
Uh, I guess it was on CBC this morning, the chair and off, chair and off refused, uh, you want an electric charging station at U B C M?
Yeah.
And he refused it because he said that, well, I'd be paraphrasing him, but he refused it anyway, thought that they were too expensive to install.
And in addition to that, in this, this news brief on that, they said multiple times that, you know, they were going to be the first people with, with a car charging station, they must be the first community in the Cutinies, because nobody in the Cutinies has a car charging station. They must have said it about four different times, so I wrote them an email, it was Bob Keating's report.
Calzador said that they wanted Roslin to have it for a little
Calzador didn't want it.
They don't want it, they don't want it.
And they said that Calzador would be the only one that would have had it if they'd taken it.
Oh. They said multiple times that the reason why they were thinking of it is because they wanted to be innovators and be the new guys.
And they, one of the people that phoned me, oh, and he's, anyway, he was a little bit irate about that thing and he said, well, I'm phoning Keating right now, is that okay? And I said, yeah, go ahead. So I don't know where it went after that.
I never got a response for my
Anyway.
My message was
Maybe he'll call one of you guys, he won't call me anymore. Is that it, Counselor?
That's it.
Okay, Counselor Blumey. Oh, you already had yours, but I didn't give you a chance to say anymore.
That's true and, um, I don't have any.
Okay, charging stations, I have no qualms about us having the charging stations because I think we are future-proofing ourselves. We may not have electric cars yet, but we will in the future, so I'm okay with those charging stations.
Great.
Especially if they were done on a grant.
It was cheap.
Um, I really enjoyed the museum thing tonight and I have a question for Counselor Thatcher, is, do we have a schedule of when the museum consultant will come and make that presentation to council? Is that
No, not yet. We have a meeting tomorrow with him.
Okay, that's great. Um, I attended the last Sustainability Commission meeting, car shares moving forward and our deputy C I O is handling designated parking space downtown, not on Columbia, off a back, on the backside for that.
Sorry, I got to disintervene there.
Yeah.
That is a recommendation that's going to come to council?
That is
Worship, that will be coming to council.
Thank you.
And myself and the manager of public works is just working it to what is possible.
Thank you.
Um, Energy Diet, another forty-six Roslanders signed up for it and there's over four hundred in the region and it's a good program, but it's been hampered by the Fortis strike and our efforts here have been, um, we feel the loss of Shelley, that was significant for this success and that's been difficult. Um, the energy issue is being pursued by the L C C D T, that's the different price differential between what B C Hydro charges and what Fortis charges and the mayor's group is looking to address the inequities with the, on the pricing with the province and I'm encouraging our mayor to get involved with the mayor's group on that and
I have been involved, Counselor.
Oh, okay, all right, I heard you haven't been, but that's okay. Um, the Innovative Education Group had two members, had an excellent experience at the Royal Roads, um, event that they went to, the council, I think, put five hundred dollars towards that and they're going to be coming to council at, at some point with a report on what they learned and what was offered and they were, they wanted to express their thanks to the city for funding that, they got a lot out of it. Uh, the Rural Development Institute did interviews with Terry Miller of the S C, me and the previous manager on the indicators project, um, which is, they did a video thing that's going to be on their website and may be shown at the C B T Symposium, talking about, you know, the, you know, um, what we learned and what we suggest to other communities and it's really positive, so that should be, that should be fun. And then this just a reminder that our next round of indicator measurements is coming up in twenty-fourteen and we need to, you know, if we're going to use this as a tool in our budgeting, we need to make sure we collect the indicators consistently and we would have to address that because the S C no longer has a budget, so that would be a question that would come to us as opposed to the commission. I'm going to attend the C B T Symposium with Tara House from the S C, we are cost savings, we are sharing a ride and a hotel room. Kevin Seldern made a presentation to the S C, he's now the community liaison for C B T, not, no longer C A F, I don't know that. We're attending meetings in communities to help educate people, different volunteer groups about the various grant funding streams that are available to people, which is just good, he has a little brochure to hand out, which is pretty cool. Um, he mentioned that C B T has, has approved the C B B C's five-year plan, so they're full speed ahead on that, which is great. Um, he talked a little bit about the community-directed funds, which the citizen boards make the regional decisions, which we've elected, we've appointed Jim Green to represent Roslin on that. And, okay, last thing is, before I left this summer, there had been the discussion of a project list, a thing that we used to have. And it was supposed to come on to our, in our info packets, or something in August. And, you know, I'd really like to see it. I think especially now, we have such lean staff, it'd be really nice to just have that list so we can keep track of, of our priorities. And that would help us to set our priorities to help direct staff more efficiently. So I would like to know when that will be coming forward. Questions from you through to staff.
No, I'll answer it without staff. We'll discuss that in our committee of the whole meetings when we start discussing social planning and all that stuff. Because that is obviously another task that has to be prioritized.
Okay, we can do that. I actually have a list, because I just sort of keep an ongoing, running list, which can serve as a basis for it. It doesn't have to be staffed on. And one of the things I think with a lean staff is that council can step forward and help in other ways.
I think we've had this discussion, councilor, as long as it took. That's wonderful.
Yeah, okay, that's it. Thank you.
Could I ask one question to councilor Thatcher regarding the museum or yourself?
Well, I have a deal.
A sticky note that I didn't have time to write. Um, I was just curious, and you might not have the answer, but if you could just maybe think, if you have a chance and opportunity to give any more input. So from town to the museum, in the, um, active transportation plan, there's a trail that went out that way. I should ask this when Daisy was here. But, um, it's being built right now.
Mm-hmm.
No, not the one up there, like out to the mine, out to the museum?
Your worship, there's two spurts to that trail. There's one going up to the Nickel Plate Park and there's one going out to the Castle Alpina.
Perfect. Thank you. That's what, I think that's going to be an important spur for people, once that project goes, to get from town to there. So I didn't realize that was part was being built. Thank you.
They could walk along the highway inside the fog line.
No, and that's exactly what I'm thinking. We're not sending our people out on that highway along the fog line.
Okay, I just.
Thank you. There we go.
Uh, a couple of things about the Luxon, we meet with Luxon tomorrow, councilor Thatcher and I. Les McLaren, the deputy minister, is here to meet with the mayors on Thursday. Thank you very much, councilor Moore. You'll be happy to know I'll be attending that.
I am happy.
I'm at the Columbia Power today, the new C E O, and, uh, of course, Ms. Repin. And they just pointed out some of their plans for the future and they would maybe like to come and present to council what their plans are sometime in November. I'm going to leave it at that. It's had very, 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 uh, many meetings and I've had to miss some, but I've made most of them. How's that? I need a motion to recess to this meeting to be in camera.
Wait, I forgot a bit more.
Okay, no.
The Chamber of Commerce at this very moment does not have an executive director, but, um, the vacation guide has been contracted out. And the, um, the board is filling in holes where necessary. And Janet, ooh, Haskins?
Rea.
In particular.
Rea.
I can't remember which one it is. Um, from, out of the cellar is in particular, um, taking charge of the rekindle. And, um, yeah, we're just going to go from there.
Great. Motion to recess to in camera, move by. Oh, sorry, it's subject to ninety-one C K labor relations and negotiations. Okay, move by spirit, second to by. Thatcher, all in favor? Close, carried. Brief pause for the cause and then we'll be in camera.